Did you let me in?
What's the chat say?
No sound.
Well, the meeting is not open. Okay, here we go.
Should have sound now, right?
Recording in progress.
Can hear it on yours.
Hey, Bob, you ready?
Sure.
Good evening. I'd like to call the February 27, 2023, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted live in the Town House Auditorium and over Zoom. We are recording the meeting as anyone else recording it. Yes, Kristen from The Times is recording it. This is a slightly unusual meeting in that we will be moving down to the Melville Room during this meeting to have a meeting with the Advisory Committee to review the Fire Department budget and the Highway Department budget. And we will return to our meeting in the auditorium during that time.
Mr. Chairman, will there be a musical interlude in the meantime?
I'm told Laura has a beautiful voice and she'll be singing to the people online. Show tunes, I believe. Thank you, Laura.
Taking requests.
That's right. So typically during the meetings with advisory, for those who may not have attended in the past, which would be the vast, vast majority of downtown, right? Basically, they look over what we've already reviewed with these departments, ask us some questions, and we move on back here. So first thing on the agenda is a couple sets of minutes. We have January 23rd and February 6th. The January 23rd meeting was, believe it or not, a dog hearing. And some other business.
A motion to approve January 23rd as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The meeting minutes of February 6th. We met with the advisory. They talked about the COLA they were recommending, which the board voted in favor of. We had a lengthy discussion about ambulance contract, the PFAS issue in town as well, or around the landfill, I should say.
On the Wilbraham Regional, it says Bob said that they're no longer, it said, we told the Belcher Town to interest in joining our regional dispatch, Bob, but Bob Markle said they're no longer interested. I don't think you did.
At Belcher Town, no. Ludlow. Ludlow was no, we're talking about the Conservation Agency?
No, we're talking about the Wilbraham Regional Emergency Communications Center.
Yes, correct.
That's correct. You said they weren't, Belcher Town is no longer interested.
I don't think that's correct.
I don't think I said that.
I don't think it's correct.
What was happening was that we put it off because the Wilbraham Select Board had not had a chance to discuss it, so.
Correct. Yeah, there's some, yeah, that's, that's, that's right. We put it aside because there was ongoing discussion within Wilbraham
Right.
about whether or not it made sense to take on another committee.
You speak to a lot of things, Bob, but we're not giving that one to you, so.
We had the PFAS discussion there.
Any other changes?
Move approval with the amendment correction.
I think the only thing I see is with that PFAS thing, didn't the board didn't the board authorize the Water Commission to seek out solicitation bids? Did I miss it in there? There's a lot here. Yeah, yeah. John asked if the board was comfortable taking, the commission taking the lead on this. But I think just needs to be noted in there that we agreed.
Right.
Other than that.
And then I think the biggest ongoing problem is finding the money in the current budget for the test we have inside this fiscal year.
Make a motion already?
Yes.
Second the motion with those amendments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Selectmen's budget. Pam or Bob, do we have anything that's really changed from last week in our budget numbers?
We do not have the building and liability estimate. What?
Can you turn off your speaker?
Answer is we've gone over it again, but nothing has changed. And we don't, the last number that we need is ambulance, last two numbers are ambulance service and property and liability insurance. And then the budget will be complete.
Well, I still think the, the board has a question. You know, you've got a suggestion on the administrator salary as well, and I don't think we've completely answered that question.
Oh, no, no one's voted here. No one has voted. No one has voted the budget. I mean.
I understand. Well, you said what's left for numbers in the thing. We really haven't come to, I think, a full understanding of where we're going to fund, how high we're going to fund that number.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You know, you've made a point that, you know, maybe you should start moving that up to a full-time number. And we haven't really had that discussion.
What I meant was you have not voted to accept this budget.
Right.
It is still in process.
I'm saying there are other, there are other questions in the budget lines as well.
Stormwater. And property and liability is where.
That's a soft number that what we have in there for stormwater.
Yeah.
Stormwater, but I mean, and you're still waiting for a couple quotes on property and liability?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going on the high with 10%, but he had said seven to 10, so I don't have a firm number.
Why is that?
Why is that? Because he's shopping it around essentially. And he was not just going to talk to the people he normally works with, but he's going to reach out to a wider group.
Good. I mean, I'll speak personally. I did shop my wife's auto insurance and, gosh, we were able to get a 30% deduction going somewhere else. So, hey, if you can do it, great. All right, so with that.
Of course, she can only drive down to Village Martin back. That's the stipulation.
Only between the hours of three and five. Thanks, yeah. Not during the dark. So with that being said, the next thing on the agenda is meeting with advisory for the fire department budget, followed by a discussion of the highway department budget. So is the board ready to move downstairs, meet with them in the Melville Room? Okay, so we will keep the Zoom session open. Laura, you know what you have to do.
We'll lose your entire audience.
No way.
Okay. All right, I'd like to welcome both budgets. Pretty minimal increase on both. Next, I'd like to welcome the town clerk. Eva.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I am wonderful. How are you?
Good. There we go.
Yeah. Okay. Where we going? Where do you want to start with?
There are so many things.
Oh, yeah.
So quickly, let's chat on the, um, so we know that annually, we have the ethics thing. You said before, there's been some
Right.
at the state, it's been a hit or miss.
Yeah, there've been a lot of bugs and quirks in the system, and I've been watching the clerk's form because we get a lot of chatter on that.
Sure.
And just this past week was the first time I didn't see anything like derogatory about it. So I did send it out Friday. If you looked at your emails, I did send it out Friday. The police department had already done theirs. We have two superstars, I will not mention names, who were actually able to get theirs done in January.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming without an issue, but that has not been the case from, from other people I've talked to or other things that I've seen. Um, now I guess everything's up and running. They, they had said January, then they said, oh, it looks like February is going to be, well, now it seems to be up and running. So
Well, the state has been ironing up bugs in their system to this point and
There are still some. I actually, um, when I ran a report after I did The police department had already done theirs, we have two superstars, I will not mention names, who were actually able to get theirs done in January.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming without an issue, but that has not been the case from, from other people I've talked to or other things that I've seen. Now, I guess everything's up and running. They, they had said January, then they said, oh, it looks like February is going to be, well, now it seems to be up and running, so.
Well, the state has been ironing up bugs in their system to this point and.
There are still some. I actually, when I ran a report after, I did mine on Friday, ran a report to see who we got in there. And we had most of the police department, and we had a couple of other people that work in the town hall. One of them, when I ran the report, said that he had not accepted the annual summary. And I imported that into my own Excel.
Mm-hmm.
And it said completed, and I thought, wait a minute, so I went back online and it said, nope, still not done.
Huh.
So there are still some little flaws in the system. That, so I looked at the actual certificates, and lo and behold, there was a certificate of compliance in there.
Mm-hmm.
But the system itself still has a few bugs, but I think that that's just minor, and it may, it may just be in the reporting at this point, so it's a go, yeah.
So you're looking for all the town officials to complete this online.
Yep.
Print the certificate and.
Not necessarily, I can actually access the certificates online myself.
Yeah, okay, so you'll know.
And that's what I was saying, I was.
You've got, you've got to swear that you've read the entire law and sign off on it.
Right.
And they keep a record.
And then she'll be notified, you'll be notified.
Well, I'm not notified, but it's, I can go into the reports and see who hasn't, who hasn't done.
If it comes up.
Yeah.
Basically, all right.
So we have two people in the town hall that have completed theirs. One of them did say that she had had problems with it, the other one apparently none except.
So we're looking for all elected officials and appointed officials as well.
Appointed and volunteers.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Laura, you ready?
And that's the other thing I was looking for too. I don't have access to everybody's emails or, you know, I don't even know who, who some of the board members are in a lot of cases, so I don't know. I try to send it out to all of boards and committees that I'm aware of, and that's as far as I can go with it. So there may be people back there that are clueless because I am.
Well, I think then you should work with, with Bob and Pam on that because they, hopefully they have a, you have that more comprehensive list.
They do.
Not the one we print, but a more detailed one that lists home address, emails, things like that.
That would make it easier, the home addresses.
What's the downside if they don't complete it? It's only, I mean, it's required, it's mandated, but.
I think it would have to be up to the town, I'm not the police, I'm just the tracker. So it would be more of a, a decision by the board, I'm thinking, I don't know if there are any state laws that actually say if you didn't finish it, you're off the board. Because a lot of people might use that to get off the board, we don't want that to happen. So I think it would be more a decision by the town to coax them into doing it. Again, I'm not, I'm not an enforcer, I'm just a reminder.
Is that the ethics and conflict of interest at the same time, or are these separate?
It's, it's all in one.
All in one, no, okay.
That training is for the, yeah, it's for the ethics, and that is the open meeting law, and everything is supposed to be part of ethics, but that's not, it doesn't come to the training.
Don, how long did it take? I mean, is it a five anything online?
Well, the, the training is about an hour.
Yeah.
But the, the acknowledgement is just a couple of minutes, so.
And the, the training is about an hour as long as you go right through it. I, I would caution anybody, you can't hurry through anymore because there's no way you can speed up.
They, and they, and they ask you questions inside it.
Yes, they do, they ask you questions inside it.
You're not walking away from this, right, right, interactive, right, okay.
And again, caution you because I was at the end of one of them, and I'd answered my questions, and I, it was a longer module. And the phone rang, and I looked to see who it was, and I thought, oh, that's someone I should pick it up on. I answered the phone and was on the conversation for a while, I thought, whoops, I couldn't go back to just that point, I had to start that module all over again, I was a little bit annoyed with myself.
I hope you let that person know who called you.
I didn't know that it was a problem, I will, next time I see him, but yeah.
Great.
I've also done it, and they give you a quiz.
Within, correct, yeah.
Within, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not like.
I got an A.
Yeah, and you don't even have to answer them right because if you answer wrong, they tell you.
No, you know, if you answer them wrong, they tell you what the right answer is.
Yeah, I mean, that's always been the case, yeah.
Great.
Okay, so we've covered ethics, do you want to do the housing authority?
So the, I reported to the board last week about my conversation with you, my conversation with Lisa DeFranco, and Rose as well. There was a, the state had wanted local housing authorities to incorporate an appointed local member, somebody who lived in the housing community, onto the board at the next qualified election. The, that mandate went into effect roughly in the summer of 21, after the town election. The election of 22 did not have an opening, because that was the year of a governor's appointee was up on the board, we, so there was nobody running. This year, one of the members of the board, one of the two on the board who actually live in the housing authority is up for election, she is not running. The lady who wishes to run has taken out papers, who lives in the housing area, would like to be appointed. However, the right thing to do would be to put a notice out, I think, that if anybody wishes to be appointed, they should put a, a notice out to the selectmen, ask for an interview and an opportunity to be appointed.
Well, doesn't the law require that the local housing authority post in their common areas?
And Lisa's won't do that with the direction from us, if that's the way we want to go with it, yes.
Well, it's the law, she has to do it that way.
But she's also working with us, keep in mind, we don't.
She has to do it that way, it's the law, the law says.
I understand that, Don, but also.
That the housing, you know, what is she looking for direction of us?
Well, I think they're like a cooperative issue.
This is very cooperative, if they would post it, and they would tell all the residents like they're supposed to, send them a card or a note, give them the clerk's phone number. Also explain to the people that they have, they have training, which is required by the law. Then they have, then people have 30 days to notify the clerk if they want to be appointed, and the clerk will notify the selectmen.
It's actually, anything that I read didn't, didn't involve the clerk, it was between the selectmen and the housing authority.
No.
And may, and maybe I, I didn't get a copy of the actual law, but what we received as clerks. So it was between the housing authority making the announcement that there was an opportunity, and I didn't act on it for the same reason John brought up. We had two people on that board, there were already members of the housing authority, regardless of whether they were appointed or not, they, they fit the situation that I think the state was trying to accommodate. Is to get someone involved in the, who actually lives there, involved in, in the committee.
Either, either way, like I said, with the timing of it, we were not negligent in our operation. We took, this will be the first opportunity that's mandated by the law to get it done. As Don said, the proper thing is to put a notice out to the residents there, anybody interested, go through the process.
And that's, again, that's just for the appointed member, because, and that's why I, again, I wasn't concerned about it for this year for the same reason.
Right.
The person who's up for reelection is a candidate, excuse me, a resident, she's not, she's not running for reelection again, this is the ideal time.
Yeah, it is the ideal time.
Right, and the one person who has taken out papers is a resident, so she was willing to run anyhow.
Right.
Obviously, then would be very willing to be appointed and not have to spend money on signs.
Good point.
Exactly, but I think in the interest, you would want to put the note, as Don said, it required to put the notice out, there may be more people interested, who's to say? And then there'll be an interview process and an appointment process after that, we have the time, let's get it done right.
And, and I agree with that.
Right.
Again, it's, everything that I read was housing authorities, like, and housing.
Okay, this is something I've had a conversation with Lisa DeFranco about, and so we'll continue to work forward on getting that announcement out in the community room.
I initially.
And she can put it out, they have, I think, distributions.
It says here, if there's no such, if there's no tenants' organization, which I don't think there is there.
There is not, there is not.
The housing authority shall immediately post notices throughout the common areas of the authority and provide each household with a notice of the opportunity to be appointed to the housing authority board.
Mm-hmm.
And if any person wishes to be considered for such appointment, that person shall submit their name within 30 days thereafter to the town clerk.
Okay, that part I don't follow.
Provided further that the notice shall include contact information for the town clerk and for the independent technical training programs by B. The board of selectmen shall then appoint the tenant from the list provided from the town clerk.
Right, and the timing for that doesn't need to be done till.
May 15th.
April, May, you know.
I think the day, I think the.
Well, it wouldn't be effective to that date, right.
Till the day it was affected at.
Yeah, effective the date of the election, which she's no longer remember.
Yeah, which she's, right. I think it's 15th.
And I apologize and thank you, the election, yes. Again, I, and this is something I had reached out to Lisa originally when this thing came out, and we discussed it briefly.
I think your point was correct, the intent was to make sure that there was local representation, and we were fortunate that we had two people.
Two people in there already.
That were elected by the town on the board, right. Okay, early voting, Eva.
Okay, early voting, um, early voting, mail-in for town meeting, excuse me, for town election mandatory, in-person, not mandatory. I don't know if you've seen any of our numbers from early voting from before.
Mm-hmm.
I personally don't see any benefit to the in-person early voting for the, the town election. I hate to say it, but unless you have something like a selectman race on, on the ballot or a big money thing on the ballot, we don't always have a really big turnout. And early voting, just for the state primaries, like $1,500, and we had 40 voters.
Mm-hmm.
But you have to man the polls, we need two people because our office is not handicap accessible, or the length of time into our minimum hours you have to accommodate. And then it's not only that, it's a matter of accommodating those, each ballot, each day has to be processed, and there's a, a login that you have to, to accommodate to get these things entered into the system. They have to be kept separately, so they're filed separately from the mail-ins, it's.
How much notice do you need for this? Because the only thing I'm aware of is that there has been some, and I think, Don, you shared this, some chatter about a potential override required by the school, although that's still very preliminary at this point.
I did, I did send out the prepping for 2023, and if it's going to be, it's not, it's not necessary, but at least five days' notice before the voting starts.
Okay, so you don't need to know tomorrow for about in-person at this point, right.
So the mail-in, we have to opt in or opt out?
The mail-in, you'd have to opt out, it's mandatory unless you, unless you opt out, the, the in-person is, you have to opt in.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have to say, they're, they're expensive propositions. People have no idea how much backroom work there is on any, any voting other than in-person at the polls.
Mm-hmm.
Because it, it's not just entering into the system, it's the way we have, it has to be filed, it has to be processed differently, we have to get people here with, especially with the bigger elections. We had to get people here, and I think we were here like eight hours, just processing early voter ballots before the, before the presidential election.
Sure.
It's, it's a, it's a lengthy, expensive process, and I'm not saying that, you know, there isn't some validity to it, but I think for a local election, you know, there's always the absentee ballot if you have to, and they're processed a little bit differently, and it's an easier thing to accommodate, but.
So the mail-in voting, we have to do when? We have to opt out?
We have to opt out, um, I, I have the timeframe here, again, that was what I sent to advising you because, okay.
I don't see any reason, really.
Um, at least 45 days before.
I don't see any reason, God, I thought of mail-in vote, voting really, it's been pretty popular.
Well, the reason is, it's a lot of work, and you don't.
I think it's more, it's more work for the in-person early voting because of the staffing as well.
Either way, um, early voting regardless, if you're not here at the polls, there's a lot more work.
Mm-hmm.
And it, because there's, there's backroom activity that has to go on, it's not just entering them, it's just the way they're logged and the way they're received and the way they're processed, it's a lengthy process for those. I can see the validity of it, um, I think we've always kind of accommodated people, the absentee, if you can't be here, fine, but this is, I just don't want to wait in line, and that's really what it is, that's what we hear more often. So it's a matter of, are you going to make it convenient just because? And that's not my call, if you guys want to do that, you gentlemen would like to do it that way, it's not my call.
Well, if you have time to wait on that, I would like to see what might be happening from, with the school budget, as Don shared, there was chatter about a potential override question, and that would be.
Again, 45 days.
I think somebody should have everybody, every opportunity to weigh in on.
45 days before, so would it be like, uh, April 1st, maybe?
About, yeah, 1st of April.
Are you still receiving state reimbursement for the additional time that's required, that they've mandated?
State reimbursement for mandated hours, yes, and they're pretty good about that. State reimbursement for the early voting.
No.
I submitted about $3,800 worth of bills for the 22, for the presidential, I think we got 903 back from that, so, yeah, reimbursement, we'll call it reimbursement. But it's, again, and just for the, for the primary, for early in-person voting was a 15, that was $1,500, just, just to accommodate them coming in to vote, that wasn't the, the backroom necessarily, which is a little more. It's just that, it's, I look at my budgets, so.
Yeah.
I look at, at the cost per ballot, um, one of them was like $11.80 a ballot, per ballot, and it, it just gets, it's a matter, again, of whether, whether or not you want to accommodate people. And that's, I don't mind accommodating people, it's just the expense of it that scares me.
Okay, um, next on the, you asked about police coverage, which I think is a kind of an annual request.
It, it is, but usually I submit it to the police chief, now that's up to the select board.
Fine.
Um, he's already got a calendar, so you would have to contact, obviously.
Is the board in favor of asking Mr. Markle with, coordinating this with Eva and the chief?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, on you, Bob. All right, election calendar, is that really a question for us?
I don't know, but I have one, I thought, I thought I'd send it to you.
I thought we need to sign that document stating the date for the election.
That's the warrant, so you can sign that.
Not the warrant, but there was the other, or is that only for the state election?
No, that's a warrant for the state election as well.
Okay, yeah.
There are, you always sign the warrants, and this is out the, obviously, the, the town election, the local election is always on the.
I know that one, but there was the other one, I think that's the state.
And it's because they're separate, so you think of it that way as, yeah, yeah. And I don't know what your question was about the calendar, but.
No, it's on, it's on the agenda, I'm not sure what your question was.
I didn't have a question, I didn't think.
Well, then we're good.
Okay, don't worry. I'm done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Yeah, and, yeah, 45 days.
45, nice.
Obviously, let me know if you use some tax or figures.
Um, one thing, Eva, while you're here, if you could work with Bob tomorrow, he gave us a preliminary copy of the, the draft for the town meeting, and he has the town election warrant at the end. I know some of the positions are wrong, if you could work that over with Bob.
Okay.
Because we know, I know there's at least three or four park and rec.
Can we discuss that?
Oh, sure.
Okay, do you have it there?
I have what Bob, yeah, it shows one park and rec.
What I did was just take what you said, you gave me, and the, the error, I think, is with park and rec.
Okay.
Whether we're electing or appointing.
Right, with park and rec, in this past May, we didn't have a candidate running, we didn't have any write-ins, so we had no candidate, and one had to be appointed. That's an appointment, that's not an elected official, that's an appointed person.
For the full term?
No.
No, only until the election.
It's appointed until the next election.
Oh, okay.
So that person, I believe, was it, was it Terry Ford?
We had Terry and then Mrs. Shuttleworth as well, so both.
We're getting to her.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So Terry Ford.
Yeah.
Was appointed after the election, which means he has to run for the two years that are left on that term.
I know.
Okay, and Shuttleworth replaced Brett Castellano, who had one year left.
Right.
And he had, she has to run for one year, and then we have two people that are on the board that would have both been up, so there's only one person on that board that doesn't have to run for election this year.
I agree, that's what I'm saying, so on this list we got here, it showed one park and rec commissioner on the election ballot this year, and I think it's actually four total.
No, no, no.
No, no, you, you highlighted.
One year, two year.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, I think there's four in various year things, but there's a total of four that are running, there's four.
You had it right.
Okay.
And you had the, the officers to be elected highlighted in yellow.
But the, the second page.
Then there was an, there was an A there, instead of pointed, and so.
The second was the information.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, there are four members of park and rec, one for two-year, one for one-year.
Okay, okay, so Bob, you'll correct it, please, thank you.
And I, I can send that information to you, it's, I believe I already had sent that to you, because it was the second page.
Okay.
Of the elected officials.
Okay.
So we're good with that.
More than good, and you can actually.
Do I have to work, Bob, again?
No, no, we're good.
And then remove the, remove the H A H, H H A position off your list as well.
And that, yeah, that, because that will be appointed, I mean, elected by the law.
Right, right.
That will be a, exactly.
Yep, yeah, okay, now we're good.
All right.
Now we're good, now you can go.
Okay.
Thank you, Eva. Ah, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Not about that, but you can go. Please, yeah. All right, hey, we haven't talked about this in quite a while.
No.
Action ambulance contract.
All right.
Almost right on time, Don, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
Yes, I did, I have several motions I'd like to bring up, if I may.
Really? Really?
I printed copies and, and gave them, I think I gave you all the copies.
All right, may I begin?
Font is pretty small, but go ahead.
There you go, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move for the purpose of clarifying any ambiguity that the board rescind the vote of December 7th, 2020. Authorizing the then-chairman to sign on behalf of the board certain proposed draft changes to the contract signed on 6/11/2020 between the town and action ambulance. And be it further recorded that proposed draft changes were not mutually agreed upon nor signed by either the contractor or the town as required by section 32 of the contract, which was in effect.
So to clarify, this was the, the. So to clarify, this was the, the change for the police chief.
The fire chief, right, and then it, it never was consummated.
But it was approved by the board.
It was approved by the board.
In order to rescind that.
What were you sending that approval?
For the purpose of discussion, do we have a second?
How does that work? Because I wasn't part of that original vote, so I can't be part of the rescinded vote, right?
I don't know.
That's another good question.
Well, the board could rescind the previous board vote, right?
Why you can't be part, I mean, it's not like you're approving minutes you weren't sitting at.
The board could rescind.
I never voted on it, though, so how can I rescind a vote that I didn't cast?
I'm going to table that one. It's a great question.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Can you withdraw that?
Sure.
For now?
For now.
All right, Bob?
I'm just trying to.
Bob, could you research that Craig's question with Rose tomorrow, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
So my second motion is, Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to exercises provided for in section one, paragraph A of the contract duly signed and entered into by the town of Hamden with Action Ambulance Incorporated, which became effective July fourth, 2020, the right to renew for one year the aforementioned contract for the period beginning, or to renew for the period beginning July first, 2023, and ending June thirtieth, 2024, so one-year extension.
With the amount that they.
With the amount, yeah, the three percent.
Would you be willing to move that motion to the end so we can go through these other motions that would reflect?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Okay.
It seems like, no, no, it just seems like we got some potential changes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, just move to the bottom.
Right, okay, we'll pull.
Put that on a.
We'll table that.
Table that one for now. Mister Chairman, I move pursuant to section thirty-two of the contract with Action Ambulance Incorporated, which went into effect July first, 2020. The board seek agreement from the following change, for the following change. Section six, response time, delete in sentence six the words "Hamden Police Dispatch" and replace with the words "Woolton Regional Emergency Communications Center." Said change, if both parties agree, because both parties have to agree, to become effective March first, 2023, and be reflected in any future contract with the town and Action Ambulance.
Second that.
No motion been made. And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. See, it can't always be, see, it can't always be difficult. Can't always be difficult, right?
Right, okay. So, yes, we have to sign that. Why don't you come up here, Mike? Mister Chairman, may I invite Mr. Runk up here?
You already have.
Thank you.
Am I? Hello, everybody.
So here's the, uh, the motion for, here's the.
So that motion just provided clarity that the.
Right, that the Wolverham Regional, it's the regional.
Is the contact, yeah, which makes sense.
Right.
Authorized to sign this on behalf of the motion?
Want to sign that? Want to sign that check? I mean.
He has a check?
All right.
All right, Don, go ahead.
Everybody got a copy? All right. Uh, yeah, that's your copy, Mike. Put down your archives, I guess, and John will give his copy to Pam, I guess. Okay, Mister Chairman, I move pursuant to section thirty-two of the contract with Action Ambulance Incorporated, which went into effect July first, 2020. The board seek agreement for the following change. Section six, response time, sentences seven through nine be replaced with the following words. Response time is over ten minutes by the primary dedicated ambulance, except when weather or traffic conditions, which are beyond the control of the contractor, cause such a delay, shall be reviewed by the contractor and the police chief, and the contractor shall submit a report to the police chief and the board of selectmen within twenty-four hours of the incident for review. The police chief shall make the initial determination whether the weather or traffic conditions, which are beyond the control of the contractor, cause a delay. The board of selectmen, after review of the incident at their option, will then have the ability to assess a non-performance fine for up to one hundred dollars, uh, excuse me, for up to five hundred dollars per incident. If agreed upon by both parties, said change will become effective March first, 2023, and be part of any future contract agreement between the two parties. So basically, what we're changing is the fire chief was in there, changing it to police chief, and the selectman being the, the authority that could find.
Yeah, I'm looking for the original language, the sentences to be replaced. Like, you know, sometimes the motions are deleting the following and then replace with.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't feel like typing that up. It was late or early.
Wow. Two in the morning again, Don?
It's going to be a three-thirty.
All right, so this is section six.
Section six. Here, John.
No, I, so, okay.
Do you want it screened, or are you, are you okay?
So basically, it's the all times will be tracked, or it could be, and then changed with the ten-minute thing? Any responses over ten?
That'll stay, yeah. And then it's just a seven, seven. It will be tracked by Hamden. I, I didn't change communications, it could still, it could be the Wolverham. I changed it. We changed it to Wolverham Regional, right? And so.
So is that going to delete the response times of eight minutes or greater?
No.
No? After that?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Just because seven is, I, maybe I'm counting wrong.
Yeah.
Must be looking at.
Seven through nine.
Eight-minute or greater part. Am I looking at the wrong copy?
Section six, response time, right?
Yeah, I don't see an eight-minute or greater part in here.
Well, the eight-minute part, John, it says sixty, sixty seconds. It says the response time within sixty, accrual acknowledged, initiated response, the response time will be four hundred and eighty seconds.
I got a different copy, I found a different copy.
Ninety percent, yep.
Just, just for clarification, should it be ten minutes and greater or over ten minutes? I don't know how that contract really is listed. I know right now it says ten minutes times over ten minutes, but.
Over ten, I just left it the same, you know?
The one comment, okay, let's just, before you start. Craig, can I have a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
All right, thank you. Um, the one point I would make is that this seems to be kind of related to motion one. Because we're making, we're codifying the police chief in here when we still haven't settled the police or fire part. See where I'm going, Craig? And if there was a way to like, just the contractor and the town's rep or something, or towns. That way, one part in the whole thing could like, take care of like, it's almost like in a contract where you said.
We used to use the word designate.
Designate, exactly. And that way, it's, you've done it once and it falls all the way through. You don't have to, like, look for every time it occurs, right? And to that one, that way, it seems to make sense. If it's the designee and then.
If it's listed as designee, as opposed to a specific entity.
Right. Bless you.
Bless you.
Yeah, I think that would be uniform across the whole thing, if every section was just listed as designee.
And then for the rest, I don't have a problem with the rest of it at that point, because it seems like it's just straightening out what was there before.
Okay, I'll say designate.
Please.
Okay, as amended?
I just have one comment.
Yep.
I think we should extend it to forty-eight hours, and it should be business hours as well, because this includes by the technical wording, weekends.
Oh, no, that makes sense. Two business days?
Yes.
That's a bit reasonable. Don?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where will we put, how will we put that?
Within two business days instead of within twenty-four hours.
Days, okay.
Right. Yeah, Craig?
Yeah.
So shall be reviewed by the contractor and the doesn't, the town's designee, and the shall, we submit a report to the town's designee and the B O S within two business days. It's basically the, some of the changes. That's it? Yeah. Mike, you go with that?
Because I think it's repeated.
I'm going to take a motion to, to approve, I'll call for a vote on this motion as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, Don.
And then, Mister Chairman, I move pursuant to section thirty-two of the contract with Action Ambulance Incorporated, which went into effect July first, 2020. The board seek agreement for the following change. Delete section seven B, which states, before an emergency medical technician or paramedic may be assigned to provide emergency services for the town on a regular or substitute basis, the police chief must give his or her approval of the assignment of the emergency medical technician or paramedic.
And renumber, and renumber all following, or just strike in its entirety and not remember?
Strike is entirely.
And not renumber?
Right.
Okay.
So I mean, well, they would have to renumber it, and, you know, they'd have, they'd have to.
Think of the work involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the, and, and, and so the re, okay.
Okay, one second.
Second, for a purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, I think it's onerous on behalf of the town to have, they have to interview everybody if they have to substitute someone on a weekend.
Whoever the designee is, yeah.
How do we do, how do we do that? And also, it also, throughout the contract, it says that the town isn't liable for any action that happens with his employees, and we don't want to have a thing in there that would.
loophole, basically, yeah. Makes sense. Craig?
Yeah, I got it.
Mike?
I completely agree. It's very time-consuming.
You don't want us in your business?
You don't want to come to court with me.
So are we changing that to designee as well?
We're deleting it.
The whole thing.
Oh, it's deleting the whole thing?
Yeah, deleting the whole thing.
Okay.
All right.
All those in favor of basically deleting section seven B? Aye.
Aye. All right, here I have a sign-off on that. Okay, which brings us back to.
Could I make a couple motions before we go to the final portion?
You may.
That's okay.
Fairway, Craig?
Mister Chairman, I move that the board authorize the following additions into section one, scope of work, that the contractor must provide a written notification to the designee and the B O S eight hours before a service level change from A L S to B L S, with an explanation of service level change. And any service level below A L S for twenty-four cumulative hours in a one-week period is subject to a non-performance, five-hundred-dollar-per-incident fine, following review of the designee, B O S, and contractor. And I will say, just for clarification, that's very similar to a contract language with Hadley, other than not requiring an A L S to be on scene.
Yeah, the problem with eight-hour notice prior to is sometimes we have a shift change right up until the shift's starting. Someone calls out sick at the last minute. Sometimes we might go into the day knowing it's uncovered, but then it gets, it stays covered, someone gets held. It's very, very difficult to move those parts, because I could be providing with notification ultimately is not accurate, is the concern on that front.
But I think the, the review afterwards would bring those facts together, and that would allow, you know, sometimes people get sick, and.
I understand that.
Review. So are you second for purposes of discussion?
Yeah, second, second, yeah. I, I, I see his point, though. How would he know eight hours before?
Only reason I, I was running that through is because I saw that similar language in the Hadley contract, so I was wondering how you're able to do it there, and I was hoping for just an explanation too, because I'm, I'm okay removing eight hours before. I just was wondering how that worked.
Yeah, so we don't provide notification to them. They know that that is onerous and difficult, and that there are different moving pieces.
So it's in there, but it's kind of a handshake agreement that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. So are you looking to modify, or just basically, to me, and I haven't seen this, the recap part is the important part. That afterwards, how did this happen, what's going to, what's going to be the effect?
Could we amend that to eight hours after a service level change? Or eight business, one business day after? Is that two still not enough time?
No, we can do that, but also keep in mind that to get to this point with additional coverage constantly twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, we might have to change pricing in the end as well, to offer shift differential bonuses, especially on weekends.
How is that? Because under the contract, we're guaranteed A L S. I'm just trying to make sure we're, we're holding the accountability there. So how would that affect pricing if we're already locked into an A L S service?
Because we're going to have to potentially modify our, the cost of doing business to ensure that that shift is filled twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five by offering potential additional incentives. What ends up going to happen is we're going to end up stealing people from other systems to work in the system.
But isn't it already guaranteed in the contract that that's the service?
Well, yeah, but what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to do something to fill those hours in the end potentially. I'm not saying we have to do it, but if we get to the point where we're constantly being fined over things like this, then we're going to have to change that model and change pricing as well.
So if we remove the fine aspect, you're okay with the?
Yes, yeah. Remember, most systems build fine expenses into the cost of the subsidy.
I just want to make sure we're, we're holding everybody accountable, just so we're on the same page, so.
Well, that's okay, and I have no problem providing the reporting. You know, we're, we're making tremendous progress. We're going to get back to that point. But, you know, there are still situations beyond our control that things do occur.
But isn't your fine at the discretion of the town?
It's discretion, yeah, after, after a meeting, so it wouldn't be happening. It's not verbatim it's going to happen, it just.
Well, but it's still there.
I see, I see your point.
Potentially, yeah. So the cost, the cost center is still there, potentially.
So.
I still go back to Craig's point. I mean, you're supposed to be covering A L S twenty-four, seven already. So, just be, yeah, let me ask you this. Do you pay the A L S people more than the B L S people?
Yes.
So if you got fined five hundred, would you have made that up in the list? By paying less in salary?
No, not, no, it's not that much of a differential. It's, it's really only a twelve to thirteen percent differential, that's all it is.
Over a shift, over a shift.
Yeah, so ultimately, we still have to pay that labor, right, with that second provider, no matter what. It's not like we're leaving the system with no provider at all. So it's still a cost associated with that.
What you're saying is that if, if that fine warning was in there in the beginning of the contract, you would normally look at the contract and say, okay, I make it, I might get fined fifteen times next year.
Over the course of the year.
Over the course of the year.
And you factor that in.
Raise my rate by seventy-five hundred bucks to cover that, or a thousand bucks to make a profit.
And it typically happens with response times as well.
Yeah.
You factor that into the cost as well.
You figure things are going to happen that you know.
And we're comfortable agreeing to the response time side of it because we understand the data a lot better. The data has gotten better, as you can see. The system's performing much better across the board.
Sure, and we haven't, and we have not fined you at all for any response, but I want to say violation or overage up this point. So if you factored that in, to be honest, you made out.
All right, well, let me, let me amend my motion then, if that's okay. I move that the board authorize the following addition to section one, scope of work, that the contractor must provide written notification to the designee and the B O S within one business day after a service level change from A L S to B L S, with an explanation of service level change.
So that's something we get now, but we don't get.
That's not written in the contract.
No, no, but we, we don't get the explanation. So what, what will happen is the notification that we currently get would be augmented with an explanation.
Right.
We currently don't get a notification, though. We don't normally get a notification when there's a service level change.
No, what hap, what happens is the rec provides a service notification change.
Correct.
That's right.
But it's not mandated. It's not in the contract.
It's not mandated, it's not in the contract.
It's the rec, it's the rec that sends it, not, not action.
Right, so I'm trying to put the accountability of them reporting it to us, so now we have a, a trackable number. And then there's a, a sense of accountability adjustment there that we can.
All right, I'll second, I'll second in the new motion.
You withdrew the first, and you offered a new motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, I would like to make another motion.
Anything written assigned for that, or no?
I don't have anything written assigned.
Okay, the motion's offered by Craig. Do I have authorization from the board to sign them as voted?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so my other motion here is I move that the board authorize to list the police chief and fire chief as joint designees.
So basically, all right, I'll, I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Second?
Thank you, thank you for discussion purposes, so.
Want to agitate you this?
It's not hard to do.
I'm in the middle here, stop it, I don't want, I don't want to be like Muncin here. Is that more work? I mean, basically, we're just talking about who you're sending the information to. And to throw a second email address on doesn't seem like a big deal.
From my, from my perspective, in terms of who is getting data?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, right now, they're in an email group with you as well.
Right.
So it has no bearing on us whatsoever, it's the same data just going to multiple people.
Right, I think our biggest talk in the past has been making sure that data has gotten out, we talked about how we felt that perhaps not all of us have been in the loop in the past couple of years, and that's something you're gonna work hard at, making sure that all reports get to everybody.
He has.
I haven't seen a lot of reports in three years.
Well, no, recently, he's.
Right, I'm saying you've really done a step-up job on making that better, I want to codify that.
In, in terms of who you want them to go to, I can change that distribution list. We have no dog in that race at all. That's really the board's decision, in terms of who you want to designate, it just doesn't matter to us.
The, the only the reporting, I don't care, like Mike, I don't care who the reports go to. But you gotta, there's certain things that, that they do, for instance, if they wanted to have a, if we have a big town event and they feel there's an ambulance that needs to be there on standby, right? So that they would, the chief, the two chiefs would get together on that, that would just.
Yeah, and I think they already do that, it's just we're now, now we're just trying to find who the designee is.
Okay.
I know Scott said publicly many times that he doesn't want to be it, but I feel like.
Yeah, I know, Scott said he didn't want to be, and when I specifically asked the fire chief, what do you see the role of the fire department as, he said whatever the selectmen tell me. I was hoping he would say, well, you know, I'd like to have a greater role in EMS. It was just whatever the selectmen tell me, so. So I guess I don't have a problem with that, the only, the only thing is how do we do the one about the overtime? The over, the over, you know, ten-minute over? Would they both report to the board of selectmen?
I think if they have forty, forty-eight hours to do, so I'm sure they can coordinate the response.
You know, and I, I just, I just trying to create a smooth system because
I agree.
Yeah.
I can't stay up every night thinking about these things.
Stay up or get up early.
Well, he goes to bed, all right.
I told you, I told, never mind.
All right.
I just have one more motion?
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I forgot.
This is where we get to raise, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no cookies tonight. All right, vote on the motions offered by Craig to basically make dual designees. Find the designee as both of them, fire chief and police chief.
You need a second?
You seconded for discussion.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All in favor? Aye, aye, thank you. And Mike, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the only other motion I'd like to make is I move that the board authorize the Hampden Fire Department as a backup ambulance service to Action Ambulance Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM, for occurrences when the primary dedicated ambulance is not available and that action cannot provide a backup.
I'm not gonna second that because I don't think it's part of this, of his contract. I think that's a separate discussion that the town, we need to have outside your contract.
I'd like to hear from the fire chief that they felt that's something they can do, can you read that again, so basically you want, go ahead.
That they, we authorize the Hampden Fire Department to be the backup service Monday through Friday, eight AM to four, when they're already in town, for occurrences when the primary dedicated action ambulance is not available, meaning it's on a call out of town, or action cannot provide a backup when that ambulance is out of service, out of town. So there's occurrences.
And.
And.
And, not or.
Not or, and. So normally, they're pretty good at sending in a backup, but you know, there's, things do happen where that's, doesn't, you know, a heavy call volume day, there may not be a, a backup available.
And so you're saying that you feel, I'm, I'll second it for purposes of discussion, all. You're saying that you feel that at that point, the three people that are on staff would serve as a backup to something else happens in town.
If something happens in town, that they would be available as the backup in town. Rather than relying on a mutual aid backup, that we don't know what the time would be from.
The hope is that they would get there first before Wolverhampton or Slumato or something.
And then at that point, maybe.
But doesn't that happen already?
It does.
Don't they roll out pretty much, because our people roll out?
They respond to everyone, don't they?
They do.
Mike, don't they respond to everyone?
They do. I mean, I'm sure when you had that five ambulance thing at the Village Food Mart last week or something like that, I heard it was him, then Wolverhampton, then Slumato, us, everybody, yeah.
But they can't transport.
Correct. They would just be, they would more likely just be the BLS backup.
And would this motion provide transport?
No. But.
So I'm just asking, how's this change the SAS quote at this point?
It's just now documented. It doesn't change anything.
So basically, we're authorized, we'd like them to provide support services in, when there's nobody in town.
Yeah, but I don't think that's part of his contract.
More like the mandate for the fire department, but, no.
I mean, I think as, as the town need, need to decide how they want to utilize their resource.
Right.
And how they want that to work with the rec as well. Because the rec's gonna make the notification.
Right, but that's not your, by my opinion, that's not your, in your contract, that's not, you don't control any of that.
Fair.
Or red or irresponsible.
That's the one, I like how, you know, they do it already, but I don't see how we factor in the Mike's deal at this point.
It's not like I'm communicating with them.
To echo what Craig is saying, our guy, our people do that already.
Correct.
They roll out, they respond, they support, now, Mike, I don't think you have any qualms with how their support has been.
No, not at all.
Right.
I'll rescind the motion.
We draw it, withdraw, and rescind it?
Rescind it.
Bring it back?
Withdraw, take it home, pack it away, eat some cookies.
Okay.
And can I make just one recommendation as well?
Yes.
We got your, we got your table thing from before, is that really moot by the designee thing?
Which one is that?
The one to rescind the motion from two years, but now whether we've amended the description of the designee.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to do that one.
It's pretty moot.
It's moot.
Right, actually, we replaced it.
We replaced it.
With a new thing.
With a new thing.
Take the pin out of that one.
We have to vote on the extension.
Yeah, but I mean, now we've modified, you're comfortable with the modifications we've made?
He has one thing.
Which should be going forward, no, I'm saying, but right now, you're comfortable with ours.
Okay. The only other modification that I have is on page one of the existing agreement, it would be one B. We agreed to exercise best efforts in order to complete a smooth transition from the town's current provider. That's no longer a situation.
Yeah.
So I recommend that that gets striked.
You're the current provider.
You are the current provider, so.
I have a question. With your improved data, can you tell which transports over ten minutes are due to traffic or weather? And which ones have other reasons?
Yes.
You can?
We can, so the other part of this, and so far, we haven't seen it, we're tracking those bad weather days. So the last storm just a few days ago, we didn't have any negative impact on response time. What happens on the overnight and through tomorrow could be something different, but we're flagging those in the system, you're not seeing it in the report to say bad weather day. Because that bad weather day could be in evening to midnight, and then midnight to noon time the next day, so that has to kind of be part of the story.
So see, Mike, on your request about one B, I would just say, I don't, I don't agree with that. If this was a new contract, I would take it out, but this is the contract in place, all we're doing is extending one year. So that circumstance is really still true.
Okay.
So that's all, if it was new, you'd be a hundred percent right, because it wouldn't be Jermaine anymore.
Okay.
All right, so we're back to the thing, and.
Back to extending for one year.
Right, at the, and I think we still should be putting a number in there, Don, do we?
Okay.
You know?
What's the number?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
I think it was around two ninety.
No, it was less than that.
I know that, it was less than that.
It was a three percent change of. It was a three percent.
It was three, three sixty-three, no.
Three percent increase over the current year.
What's the, what's the number?
I believe I, did I put the number in here? I worked out the number. Yeah, it was three sixty-three, sounds right.
You have, you have it in here, right?
I thought it was in the budget.
Here we are. Three sixty-three, eight, seven, eight.
All right. Want to make the motion again?
It's on, in the selectmen's budget, it's on the third page, or, I'm sorry, the fourth page.
Okay, I got it, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to exercise as provided for in Section one, Paragraph A, the contract duly signed and entered into by the town of Hampden with the Action Ambulance Inc., which became effective July first, two thousand and twenty, the right to renew for one year the aforementioned contract as amended, right? For the period begin, amendments tonight, for the period beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and then July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the sum of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
With reimbursement possibilities?
With, with the reimbursement possibility, with their rebate possibility.
Possibilities, yes, that still stays in effect.
The budget that he, the, the budget that he submitted does have a higher rebate number.
Yeah.
So we'll add that into it.
Second?
All those, is there any discussion?
I don't think so.
Mike, you're comfortable with this?
I am.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Don Davenport votes aye.
Aye.
Greg votes aye, John votes aye. Michael, I want to thank you for your patience.
Michael, thank you very much.
Nope, you're very welcome. I also want to thank the ambulance committee in attendance for their efforts and their work on this, but it's not over. We gave you another, for another year. Back on the clock.
No.
But there's a rebate for you, Jim.
All right.
Let's summarize the, let's summarize the amendments and, and have something new to sign after that, please, yeah, for next week.
So we'll have the amendments incorporated into the existing contract and have it available for your signature next week.
You could do it that way.
Unless you want.
Where you could just play from all of the.
Incorporated, you leave it in the office, you can come in and sign it individually.
Yeah, if you can do it, just leave it in the office, we'll just sign it.
All right. Okay.
I mean, you don't have to see each other either.
Put a pin in it, Don. Okay, next on the agenda is the annual town meeting, which will be held at Thornton Burgess on May eighth, seven AM in the evening. Bob has handed out a preliminary list of articles, quick discussion from the board, we see the we need an article added for the fire truck matching money.
Yep.
Now, we've been notified by the Minnetoka Land Trust, they'd like an article to reimburse them for stump grinding costs. It's got to be added in here, anybody else seen?
The highway, the highway truck.
Highway truck as well.
Correct.
And of course, we did hear the potential for, my conversation with the school community chair is that that discussion in the paper was very preliminary at this point, and they really have no definition on articles yet for the town meeting warrant. There may be them, but there's no nothing even close to closure at this time for amounts or specificity.
So we have three additions and a potential override.
Potential two.
Well, that would not be an article, that would be an election.
Yeah, I think you have to have an article and an election, subject to a positive referendum vote, it's two things.
Override, right, yeah.
Refer to it, yeah.
Should we remove Article ten for this, one, and maybe put it next year, since there's gonna be a lot of numbers thrown around this year?
I'd like to leave it in so it's discussed, you know? So that's, I mean, we may take no action.
Yeah, we could take no.
I will tell you that we had a discussion today, maybe a little early, but we had a discussion at the senior center building committee meeting that we may be too early, not able to get that enough information on the RFQ for a senior center expansion. But it's important to have it talked about the annual town meeting, so that if we come back in the fall, it's not like, oh my gosh, you never brought it up before. So here, it'll have the full lay today, and then we feel comfortable talking about it at the fall town meeting.
Would that be really adequate spot, fall town meeting, to talk about that?
We think that historically, if you had a full discussion of it at the spring and prepped everybody up, look, we'll have, and we know approximately what the number is, that's appropriate. Because everybody knew. Rather than you'd never even brought it up before.
We'll see.
Will they remember? That's Don's normal thing, like, he doesn't know what lunch was yesterday.
Also note on Article four, I've added back a board of health revolving fund.
Yeah, Craig, do you have a sense where you're?
Do you have a number, Craig?
I don't have a number yet.
Look at historical, what it's been, yeah. And of course, what might happen with, what's going on with the?
Testing.
I know, the contract, right, yeah.
Haven't heard from the preservation committee, but I have a placeholder there for.
Look, we're looking at one article at this point, not just the money one, but the one that I believe that came the land trust came before the board back maybe three months ago and talked about property adjacent to Minnetoka Mountain, but also bordered on the river. And conversation with Doug, that's probably the only article at this point.
The easement with National Grid, I have a, the easement with, with Grid, I have a placeholder there. Additional funding for the master plan, I know the planning committee is looking over the bids. One bid, I guess would not require additional funds. But I need, I'll need a number for that. I put fiber optic borrowing in there, I don't know if that's gonna be premature or not. We have a meeting on Wednesday afternoon again to talk to them, so we'll get some more information on that.
Maybe a good opportunity to really discuss it in front of a hundred and fifty people, sure.
They will, Fiber Whip City will, can set up a community outreach there with information as well. That's what they've told us in the past, right, Bob?
Yep. And I did get a preliminary copy of the accessory apartment regulation. So that's the long article here.
Right, the other modification, we're looking at a modification to the signed bylaw as well, but we won't have that ready for this town meeting. But it really needs to be updated.
And the rest is more or less boilerplate?
Mm-hmm, okay. Correspondent, selectman report, I think pretty much reported on everybody I know, Don.
Planning committee.
Do you have another tour coming, or what's the next?
A meeting tomorrow with the planning committee, superintendent's gonna talk about his ideas of utilization of the building.
Okay.
Is that a public meeting, or is that just a?
It is a public meeting, it's a public meeting, it's in the superintendent's office. Sometimes we have snacks, sometimes we don't.
I thought there was something else tomorrow, too. No. Something on Tuesday, no?
I'm drawing a blank.
All right, so, and Wednesday, of course, we have the.
I don't know, I wonder if we'll have it with the weather, they might.
They'll have a snow day tomorrow already, so.
Snow day, the schools will be closed, so I don't know. But the lights are out.
Okay. I did see the comment about, I guess it was Donna raised her hand, but did we answer your question? That was during the ambulance discussion, somebody said you raised your hand, but then you put it back down. Right.
Yeah, you can drop, you can drop.
Okay. Okay, she raised it and lowered it. Just a little iPad, no, I don't know who iPad is. All right. How is the town report coming? Okay, is this staff meeting week, or is that next week?
It is. It's Wednesday.
Number one on the agenda.
That's on my agenda.
There we are. Okay.
Actually, it's not number one, it's number two.
What's number one?
Ethics.
Okay. Ethical way to begin, how's your report, Bob?
Well, um, much of my time this week has been involved with the ATM warrant draft. I did complete the Mass Ethics Commission training, and, um, uh, we'll encourage all town employees, uh, uh, by email, as well as, uh, this, at the, at the, uh, meeting on, uh, Wednesday, it takes about an hour, and there's no way you can shortcut it. Uh, they don't allow you to flip from slide to slide unless you've completed one, so. Health director came in, we talked to him, I've asked for a written explanation of expenses, haven't received that yet, but I'm sure I will, government study committee is meeting next Monday. Uh, we did send the community flyer.
Oh, it was canceled tonight?
To the two, pardon?
You canceled the meeting tonight?
It was canceled tonight because there was no agenda, and the reason there's no agenda is that they don't have any officers yet, so there's no one responsible for it, and while this morning, walking in in the parking lot, I was approached by a member who said, is there an agenda? I said, I haven't posted any agenda, because our policy is arms-length from this, and as, as it turned out, uh, put bluntly, no one's in charge yet.
Well, that's why I saw last time when Rick mentioned that he was gonna not be at the next meeting so they could elect officers, and I'm like, I think the handoff was too early, he should be there while they elect, and then he can step, so.
So I did post an agenda today for them next week, and I have on the agenda the election of officers, as well as setting of the regular meeting times and so forth, the other housekeeping stuff.
So they're gonna be meeting Monday, same as us?
Monday at 5 o'clock.
Uh, 6 o'clock?
So, I'm sorry, 6 o'clock, I posted it for 6, yes, it was posted for 5 o'clock today. Went to the ERC 5 breakfast, it was very well attended, probably 200 people, representing all the communities in the region, a lot of government people there, um, that's, uh, intended to have their cooperation for our program next year, or in the spring, um, so the meeting flyer, went to the both newspapers, uh, we did a robo-call at 5 o'clock today, um, and I sent out the flyer to the all-town list, that's every member of every board and every committee, uh, involved with town government, so, we'll see. We also talked with Burim today about connecting the speakers, had a subsequent talk with Craig, and they disagree, so we'll get that worked out, and I think it's a very good idea, and I, and I'm glad we can make it work, so that people who are sitting here, and who cannot always hear what you're saying, sometimes I can't hear what you're saying, and, um, it'll come out through the loudspeakers, and, um, everyone will have a chance to hear what the discussion is.
I thought we had originally bought a soundbar, was that, and then what happened?
We have a soundbar.
Okay.
We have a soundbar.
That would be for hooking it up to the TV.
Right, wouldn't that work?
Not really.
Somebody posing.
That's my daughter.
So those are the issues in my report.
Okay, thank you, Bob. All right, uh.
While I'm doing the, the bills here, this operating budget assessment from the Eastern Hampton, is that, that fits in our budget, right, it's 13,000 bucks, I think we have 20,000 in there.
Is this the veterans?
Yes, this is the Eastern Hampton Vets District, yes, correct, correct, part of the reason why our assessment is, is up, up some, is that we've had one community drop out of the district.
But we got, but I think we budgeted for 20,000.
Right, worst case. Craig, so you're gonna be working with Bob on that, uh, health, uh, regional thing, right? Overage, you know, what the.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, great, anything else to come before the board? Oh, next week, I'm sorry, uh, Craig has made a request that we have an executive session, he'd like to have an update from Jesse, is the board good with that?
Sure.
Okay, let's put that first on the agenda, please, Bob. Purpose of, uh, discussing ongoing litigation, correct, okay, okay, anything else to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all, be careful out there.